Want to welcome everybody to the October 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. It is presently very shortly after 6:00 PM and we're hereby called to order. At this time, we will introduce the commission, starting to my left with roll call, please.
Debbie Gordon.
Deb Cameron.
Elizabeth Shen.
Scott Brown.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate you being here. We look forward to hearing what you have to say. Our first order of business regards the August 13, 2024 minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review those minutes and are there any amendments or discussion around that? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second at this time, is there any debate? Seeing no debate, all in favor of approving the minutes for the August 13, 2024 meeting, please raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. At this time, do we have any organizational or procedural items to deal with? Okay? Any unfinished business at this time? All right. Well, at this time, then, we will go ahead and move forward to new business. That is RZ 24-02, request to rezone 2480, 2526, Mount Vernon Road, and 2495 Jet Ferry Road from Neighborhood Shopping, also known as NS, to C1 Local Commercial. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm just going to give a quick run through of the requests this evening. Is this better? Okay, okay, I'll try to really project. Is that good? So, the request this evening is coming from the Branch Mount Vernon Associates, and they're requesting to reason the subject properties from Neighborhood Shopping to Local Commercial. And the nature of the request is essentially to expand the number of allowed uses within the existing shopping center. So, for a little bit of background, this is the shopping center that is at the intersection of Mount Vernon Road, Dunwoody Club Drive, and Jet Ferry Road. It consists of three addresses, 2480, 2495, and 20, excuse me, 2526. It does exclude the parcel that's right at the corner of Jet Ferry Road and Mount Vernon Road, which is the Crema currently. That is not part of the request. It's just for the shopping center and the Chase Bank. Essentially, this is a parcel that was developed out in the early 1970s. A bank was redeveloped on the corner parcel into the Chase Bank in 2014. And currently, the shopping center has a vacancy in their main tenant space, which is around 30,000 square feet. That has cycled through a couple grocery stores in the past couple of years. There's been a Sprouts that opened and closed, and then most recently, there was the Lidl that opened and closed as well. And now it is sitting vacant. And then, the remainder of the shopping center has mostly personal service tenants, local community businesses, and the bank. So, as far as the existing development goes, there's 2480 Mount Vernon, which is the 30,000 square foot tenant space that is currently vacant. Then there's also the one to two-story commercial building right next door, 2495 Jet Ferry. Like I said, that's the one with lots of local businesses. There's an animal hospital, nail salon, hair salon, those types of services. And then there's the Chase Bank at the corner. And there's currently a total of 325 parking spaces. And essentially, what they are proposing to do is to not mess with any of those buildings. They're not going to add any additional square footage. They're not going to knock any of them down and redevelop them. They are requesting that the existing buildings remain as they are with no new construction. The only thing that's going to change on the property is that there are going to be some, in terms of the built environment, is there is going to be some parking lot improvements. They're going to add some landscape islands for tree plantings. There's going to be some improved pedestrian access from the sidewalks, and they're also going to re-strike their spaces for better circulation. So, that's the extent of the physical improvements that they're proposing on the property. The main reason for the request is to expand the number of allowed uses. So, the Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District is a very narrow commercial district. It's mostly allowing for office, retail, and personal services. And then the C1 District is a local commercial district. It's not anything necessarily intended for heavy uses, but it does have a wider variety of allowed uses. And for reference, this is the allowed use comparison. I won't go through the whole list, but I'll just explain really quickly. And then, you know, if you guys have questions, we can go through it more in detail later. But this is a table that I created to compare the current allowed uses in Neighborhood Shopping. And this is the first column labeled NS. And then the middle column is the local commercial allowed uses. And then the last column is the local commercial zoning district as proposed by the applicant. So, the applicant is requesting to rezone to the commercial, local commercial zoning district, with some caveats where they have essentially narrowed down the number of allowed uses just to take out anything that is considered too heavy for the neighborhood area. So, essentially removing any of the car-related uses, like gas stations and car washes, and heavier types of retail, like construction, sales, and things like that. So, again, the first column is what's currently allowed. The second column is what's generally allowed in local commercial. And then the third column is what would be allowed through this rezoning as proposed by the applicant. And then this is a continuation of that. It's a very long list. Like I said, I won't go through it in detail, but if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. I also have this slide, and this is again just for reference, and this is showing just the differences. So, what's currently, you know, allowed or disallowed in Neighborhood Shopping, and then what is different? So, only the uses that have changed. And that, again, is just for quick reference if anyone has any specific questions. Again, I won't go through it in detail. But overall, for the rezoning approval criteria, we do find that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The small character area for this shopping center is the Mount Vernon character area, which does encourage mixed-use development, and, you know, development that is going to fill existing vacancies. And like I said, there is an existing vacancy on this site. It's their most significant commercial space, like I said, around 30,000 square feet, and they have not been able to attract a suitable anchor tenant. A grocery store has not been successful there due to the existence of the Kroger grocery store across the street, sort of eating up, you know, the existing market for that type of use. And the Neighborhood Shopping District is too restrictive to allow them to consider other tenants that could fill that space. So, for example, something like indoor recreation, which is allowed in local commercial, but not allowed in Neighborhood Shopping, is something that the applicant has specifically said they would like to explore at that site. And overall, we find that activating that existing storefront would really benefit the shopping center and the surrounding uses. Having an anchor tenant is really important for shopping centers because it also drives people to visit all of the other smaller tenants on the site as well. So, for those reasons, staff is recommending approval, subject to a certain set of conditions. Number one is the prohibited, permitted, and prohibited uses. So, that would be the applicant's amended table for the local commercial district. The second is the site survey, and this is essentially going to tie them to what is currently built there in terms of the buildings. So, if they ever want to redevelop the site, you know, knock down the existing buildings and build something new, they would have to go forward for another zoning request. So, it's something that would, you know, the public would be alerted to, and it would get reviewed by the Planning Commission and the City Council. So, that's what the second exhibit does. And then the third exhibit is just related to their parking lot improvements, and essentially allowing them to make those improvements. And the conditions are written essentially in relation to those three exhibits. So, the first condition is tying them to that prohibited use table. The second one is tying them to the survey, and the third is tying them to making those parking lot improvements. If you have any other additional questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes, thank you, Laurel David with the Galloway Law Group. Sorry, we were a little bit late getting into the room, so I was sitting behind the pillar, not on purpose, I promise. As, yeah, sure. I think Madeline did a great job with the staff report laying out the basics of what we're trying to do. I do want to add to it that Branch is one of the larger retail developers that provides grocery stores in the southeast. So, I think based on their efforts, they were, tried very hard to get another grocery store in there, but were not able to. And they had been marketing the property, and essentially, a user came to them, which we discovered was not allowed. And that's a use that is, well, one of them is like an indoor pickleball with food and drink. The building is 30,000 square feet, which is large enough to accommodate something like that, but it qualifies as a spectator sport indoors, which is not allowed in NS. I'm just going to go, we've got a couple of boards, which I just want to show to you briefly, and then show to the audience as well. I think you can see from the pictures that the tenant that's interested is looking to make some significant improvements to the interior building. We were going to set up easels for you, but I didn't want to block anybody's view. So, the indoor spectator sports classification is allowed in C1, as I said, but not in NS. They'll also have food and drink, but that will be the primary use. The, allowing the rezoning will give Branch an opportunity to allow some different uses that are not allowed in NS to make the building more marketable and also activate the rest of the retail center. In fact, when I was looking through the uses right now, there were some things that kind of struck me that were not allowed in NS, things like a cultural exhibit, an event center, things that actually kind of surprised me that they were only allowed in C1. The staff report touched briefly on the improvements they're going to make to the parking lot. Essentially, they're going to add a lot more landscape islands with opportunity for more trees, and also stripe in pedestrian crosswalks, which are not there now. There are also six parking spaces that are in the Dunwoody Club Drive right of way. They're going to reconfigure those and redistribute them in the site. The amended C1 table, I think, is in your packet. You'll see a lot of the things that are in C1 are actually also allowed in NS, but there is that one essential difference. In addition to our participation meeting, Branch did give a presentation to the Dunwoody Homeowners Association, answered their questions. There was no negative opposition that was expressed at the meeting, and we agree and accept staff's conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, it appears we've got a lot of folks here that are interested in commenting. And so, what we traditionally do is schedule 10 minutes in favor, and then 10 minutes opposed. However, if one side appears to have a lot to say, we as a body can vote to extend that time, and of course, will offer the same amount of time to the opposing party. So, we're definitely interested. I mean, as everyone here likely knows, the purpose of this body is to review plans and make recommendations to council. And part of reviewing plans is hearing what folks have to say about them. And so, what I would do is invite first those in favor to come up, preferably in an orderly form. I don't have any sheets in front of me. Paul, do you want to call names?
Do I have everybody's cards who wishes to speak now? Then I'll give the cards.
Okay, that is a thinner pile than I expected. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and request, there's one name here that I apologize, I can't read anything on, but I see a couple of against. We're going to go ahead and start with the fours. Will there be anybody here speaking in favor for this proposed plan? And if so, please come up, introduce yourself, and proceed. Ma'am, I see your hand. If you'd like to come up, please, that would be great. Please, please go ahead and get on the mic if you choose to, if you choose to make comment. We want to hear you.
Woodlands Association, and we sent a letter. We're not opposed to the C1. Oh, I'm sorry, Pat Livingston, President of the Woodlands Association. H.O.A. 1967 Chartridge Court, Dunwoody, 30338. We're not opposed to the C1. We just want to have a say in actually what would be allowable. And we couldn't read what they were proposing. So, if they, if we could have seen the list that they're proposing, we went, we went through the C1 list and said, we surveyed our entire neighborhood, and we got back responses and picked the top seven that we found to be acceptable. I don't want to talk about what we don't want. We want to talk about what we do want, what we welcome, what would add value to the community, what we'd support. And we sent the letter in to you all. I don't know if you got it this morning. Okay. So, it was, you know, from us, it's a positive. We want, we don't want to see fallow property going to waste. That's a nice little area. So, the kinds of things that we're looking at are a restaurant, either fine dining or family-friendly dining, medical office or a clinic, a hardware store, oddly enough, a health club. An indoor pickleball court came up as being something we found acceptable through our neighborhood, a barber beauty shop, medical dental labs, and any retail specialty. So, we are in favor of the C1 as long as it isn't lodging. I think the C1 has some, a big swing, a broad array of what is acceptable in that area. And so, if I could have read that list that the people said they wanted to do, we'd probably look at it. The pickleball seemed okay. It's on our list.
Okay.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Will there be anybody else here speaking in favor, please? Ma'am? If you would, please deliver that, and then step up, introduce yourself, share your name and address, and we'll be happy to hear you.
Yes, I'm Cynthia Stern, and I actually live in the Woodlands. And the, the conversation that we've had in the Woodlands is that just as my homeowner association president has, you know, stated, is we didn't have the details. And, you know, to flash them up on a screen, we never really had the details of exactly what's going to be coming in. We want something positive. We want something to enrich our community, and that's where we are. We've been, most of the people in the Woodlands have been there for 40 years, I have as well. And I just want things that will be a positive to that area and will enrich all the new families, because we have a lot of young families that are coming into that area who want to make sure that their property values increase, not decrease. So, that's, that's where I stand with that, being part of the community for 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, just, just point of clarity, if we can pause the timer on the fours real quick. Was the agenda for this meeting, including all the exhibits, made public prior to this meeting?
Yes, it was. It was published. It was both published last week with the attachments.
Okay. Okay, it seems that there's a communication divide that the city might, might hope to address. But going on for additional, additional folks speaking in favor, will there be any? Yes, sir. Sir, did I hear you say Chuck Wing?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I had trouble reading the writing, and I hear, okay, questionable.
Yeah, Chuck Wing, I live in Brook Farm.
Yes.
And I'm not opposed to, because I'd really like to see it developed by Brand and have a very nice shopping center and something that's good for the community. However, the few things I'd like to know from Brand is, first of all, did they plan to apply for a liquor license? That was not in the information I got from the proposal that they sent to you. So, I'd like to know from them if they plan to do a liquor license there. And also, if they plan to do a adult entertainment center, and I'm including pickleball there too, because of the age of people that would be going there, I think Dunwoody is going to need additional police. And right now, we can't afford, or we don't have enough police as there is, to have another police force parole that area if it's late at night and filled with maybe teenagers who maybe consume too many beverages or whatever. So, again, I think we would have to have additional police, and I don't know if that was in their proposal. From what I read, it wasn't. The hours of operation, they didn't say that in their proposal. So, again, much in favor, but I don't want to see something that's open up to 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night. I like to see, because the community is a quiet community, and we don't need that kind of entertainment or movement at that time of night. If it's an adult entertainment center, which I think is great. However, I'm very familiar with a couple of adult entertainment centers, the Pink Pig, the Pickle Pig, etc. I know those arenas very well. They're located mostly in downtown Atlanta. They have pool tables. They have putt-putt golf. They have bowling. They have a liquor license, and it's a very rowdy cloud, the crowd after 8:00 at night. And I don't think that we should have that kind of activity in Dunwoody. The, the thing about the parking, I'm very familiar with that lot. And in their proposal, they proposed nine parking, additional parking spaces down by the dumpster in that lot. There are not nine additional parking spaces there. In the presentation that they gave to you, they said that they would have nine additional parking spaces. They would have one year to complete it, and if it didn't complete it in one year, they could have another year to try to complete it. Well, I would like all of you to go down there and look at that area. Tell me how they're going to get nine additional parking spaces out of that. The, I guess, basically, I just want answers, and I think everybody wants answers from what Brand really wants to do, because they must know right now what potential people they have going into that, that center. So, why can't we get more definite information from them, exactly what they want to put in there? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other folks speaking in favor? I will note that many of our in-favors have been very concerned, cautious in-favors, is how I would characterize them. Are there any folks speaking in favor, though, at this point? Okay, well, then, at this point, I will go ahead. Paul, how are we on time?
We have a total of five minutes left.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and reserve that, and if folks want to, want to pick it up at the end, we can do that. But at this point, we will go ahead and invite those speaking out against this to come forward. I have a couple of comment cards. I'm going to call those first, and then thereafter, if you believe you have something to say that you want us to hear, by all means, we will go through that process as well. At this time, I would ask Ms. Sloan, 2340 Haverstraw Court, to approach.
Do I have to repeat my address?
You know what? We got it this time.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I've lived in Dunwoody.
May I ask you to pull that down?
Oh, yeah, sure. There you go. I've lived here for 36 years and have watched that, that facility. That facility and change hands. I think it's the feeling I have. I put, it's interesting, the four were expressing a lot of my feelings of against. I don't think there is enough structure in the proposal that protect the neighborhood. And it's just the fact of seeing it on the screen and didn't you look at the website? It's a feeling of this is being pushed through and maybe we'll live to regret it. I wouldn't, in my against, I'm wanting the. Board here to ask some questions and really look at it more carefully and maybe request some more information. Before they make a decision for or against. The print's too small. And when I worked in the government, when the print gets real small, watch out. And that's my statement.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I would ask Ms. Mary Schultz, 5461 Woodland Court, please step forward.
Hi, I didn't really say I'm totally against. I mean, I just put it depends on my sheet because. I would like to see the property developed. I don't think that's a problem. It's just the concern of the noise and, you know. What kind of tenant that we get in there, you know, and stuff. I, on that sheet that you just posted, I mean, you know, you have those three columns. And you have the highlighted in the third column. I would really like to see what the highlighted third column says, you know? And my second question is, once these guys get the C designation, what if they're, this person with the. Whoever they've got goes out of business, are they tied to picking one of those people in that column C? The yellow highlighted, you know, businesses, or is this just, you know, anybody that's under that C designation can go in there, you know, and stuff? That's what's concerning to me, you know, as, as our president or our HOA discussed, you know, and stuff. We, you know, we're not against everything going in there. We're just, we live in a, it's a residential neighborhood. And we don't want a lot of noise, you know, after sunset. I mean, you know, we're, there's a lot of people that live. Especially in our subdivision who are older people and, you know, we don't want to be listening to all this loud music or the police coming at night. You know, with the sirens blaring, you know, and stuff disturbing us. I mean, our, our community is quiet and, and we like it that way. So. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I don't have any more sheets of those speaking opposed, but I'd be happy to hear from anybody else who wishes to. Sir, step forward, introduce yourself, share your address and let us have it.
My name is David Barnhart. I live at 5299 Brook Lake Drive. I kind of echo a little bit of what she said. I don't think, well, I'm not personally not against. Upgrading and renewal of the tenant mix there, but I think you've left a lot of. A lot of room for discussion on how you're actually going to go about doing things. For instance. This, whatever you call this, that has the various uses with it. You, they put a P in a column, which means those things will be permitted. And one of the things that is permitted is. In a very general description, eating and drinking establishments and this permitted. Well, if you look at the Dunwoody zoning. Rules. They can close at 2:00 AM in the morning. Somebody was talking about closing at sundown. 2:00 AM is when they're approved in that zoning criteria. So I would like to, to offer things in writing somewhere that, you know, like have a maximum eleven. PM close. And then you also want. A special events faculty or facility. Well, if you look up the definition in your zoning criteria, special events are quote similar. In nature to auditoriums, stadiums and arenas. Well, when I hear those words, I think big crowds. And you don't have a lot of parking there. I counted the spaces on that. Site plan and you have about five per thousand. Most food and entertainment venues. Have ten per thousand parking. I'm in the development business, so I know a little bit about it. And, you know, I think you need to be willing to specify some. You know, some limits on these things instead of just saying, you know, we want this or we want that without. Going into detail. And I think that's going to be a problem. And, and I'm curious to know. You know, most of the shopping centers I've ever seen have ten per thousand. As parking, parking ten, ten parking places per thousand square feet of, of building. In food and entertainment. You don't say anything about that. And you only have five per thousand. If you put a couple of big restaurants in there, you're already going to be exceeding. Five per thousand and you're not going to have enough parking. And people are worried about you parking in adjoining subdivisions. Well, if you don't have enough parking on site because you have uses that use more than five per thousand. Those people are going to park somewhere and they're going to go to these adjoining subdivisions. That are basically a sixty foot right away across their hundreds of homes back in there across Mount Vernon. So if you don't have enough, I mean, this, these. Criteria that you have here are loosely written to the point that you're not going to be required to, to have certain things. And I just think they need to be expanded upon and you have limitations on the amount of restaurant space. I know that. There's, I've seen a couple of, Marietta has a food hall. And they have like fourteen restaurants. It's almost like a county fair environment. And they're around the edge of. You know, a, a larger building that looked like it was an old grocery store. And. You know, there's fourteen restaurants there, but they have a huge parking lot. And we don't have that. If you start putting loading up with, with restaurants and users who take a lot of parking. And you don't give them any more parking, you're going to cause overflow into the subdivision. So. I would just be asking for the right to talk to somebody. About, you know, let's get specific about these uses and don't just say, you know, we want a special events building. Well, if you go to that definition that's in print, it says, you know, well. We told you it was going to be like an auditorium. Well, that could be anything. So I would just say we need more detail as to what exactly is going to go on. Thanks.
Thank you. Paul, how are we on time?
We have two and a half minutes left.
Okay, well, you know what? We'll go ahead and start hearing you. And if we need more time, then we'll figure that out as a body.
My name's Tolly Garrett and I live at 7560 Brigham Drive. So I'm technically not in Dunwoody, but I'm very close to this property. I live in Deerfield. I have questions about the use. I, there are some in the, I looked at the documents online today. And there are some on their proposal in that highlighted area that are reded out, as in, we're not asking for this, like the car wash and things like that. So it sounds like there is an opportunity to narrow, as a lot of people have said, narrow the scope of what we're allowing them to do. Because if we make it too broad and the initial pickleball, whoever vendor moves out, we aren't left with. Something that's undesirable because it's just allowed. So, I mean, things like, I think there were options for body art. Facilities and some adult type sounding facilities that probably we would not necessarily want in our neighborhood community. So I would like to see, as a lot of people have said, y'all really look in detail at that and see if possibly that. List of allowed things can be narrowed further, some more reded out areas like besides the car wash and the gas station and some of those types of things.
Thank you. Will there be anybody else speaking in opposition? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to the, to the next phase. Yes, ma'am. No, you have to speak on the microphone if you please. I apologize. We want everybody to hear you. We want it to be on the record. Paul, how are we on time?
It'll be quick.
Okay.
My name is Candy Cox and I live in Littlebrook. And my only question was, when I was looking at the sheet, the forms that were sent out. It looked like they had no plans for mixed use, but it didn't limit it to that. And I would like, I, I. It took me thirty minutes to get from my house to here tonight. It was bumper to bumper. I don't want. People living, I don't want apartments or condos or whatever on above the businesses or the commercial use. Because it would really impact, well, parking's not there either, but it would impact our roads. And our roads are very, very crowded now. Bumper to bumper in the mornings, bumper to bumper at 10:30 in the morning. It's bumper to bumper tonight. I would like them to limit it so there could not be. Apartments or condos above the commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's somebody else. We are really on the home stretch. So Paul, how are we on time?
We have ten seconds left.
Okay, well, sir, sir, we may be able to hear you. We're going to go ahead and need to vote. And what we're going to do is we're going to take a quick vote on extending this. Let's go ahead and say five minutes. And if we extend five minutes, I might remind everybody, we're extending five minutes, both against and for. And if we need to do it again, we'll do it again. Okay? So at this time, we have a motion to extend or is there a motion to extend? So we can hear everybody.
A motion to extend our, our speaker time by another five minutes.
All right, Commissioner Brown moves to extend. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Gordon seconds. Is there any discussion? At this time, all in favor of extending five minutes, raise your hand. Opposed like sign that carries unanimously. It looks like we can go ahead and move forward. All right, sir, if you please, come forward. Tell us who you are, tell us where you're from and love to hear what you have to say.
Hey, everybody. I'm Tristan Schreger. I live at 7585 Brigham Drive. In fact, my neighbor is right over there. So we kind of just want to bring up the point that this extends beyond just Dunwoody in the Sandy Springs as well. And what concerns me the most is not the pickleball. All of that stuff sounds really wonderful. For me, it's what comes next, right? After that leaves, you know, pickleball might be a fad five, 10 years wonderful, but really what comes next. So I plan on going back, reading through the details a little bit more carefully. And just really wanted to understand what comes after that and express the concerns that a lot of the good folks here have as well. So just wanted to emphasize that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're still on opposed. We will give any in favor that did not get a chance to speak the time to do so. Will there be anybody else speaking in opposition? Going once, going twice. All right, thank you. Because we extended the opposition time by five minutes, we're doing the same for speaking in promotion. Anybody in favor, speaking in favor of this at this time, please step forward. Okay, going once, going twice, gone. All right. Hearing no further discussion or speaking for or against, what we're going to do is now move to the time where. The board has an opportunity to ask questions and have some discussion amongst themselves. And you're going to hear a lot of questions. There may be some reactions. We're just going to go ahead and ask everybody, let the process happen. And so at this time, I'm going to look to my right to Commissioner Brown, start the discussion there. And we're going to go all the way across the dais and hopefully have some insightful questions and discussions and move forward from there. Mr. Brown.
Right, thank you. I think I would like, I've got a few questions for the applicant and a few for Dunwoody staff. And I think I'd like to start with the applicant, if I may. I guess. Speaking to somewhat lack of information, I appreciate the boards that you brought, that they look nice. But wondering if you could elaborate a little more about exactly what, what you're proposing with this pickleball venue. I, I guess first, you know, do we, do we know approximately how many pickleball courts we'd be talking about in a thirty thousand square foot. Face, space. And then if we could address some of the questions that came up as far as, you know, will you be applying for a liquor, liquor license? Proposed hours of operation and. You know, how security may be handled on the site as well.
Sure, the, I'm getting whisperings. There's several representatives from branch here. And I do want to point out, if you see one of them leave, it's his son's birthday tonight. So he's gonna, he needs to head out. Sorry, someone, we've got three people from branch here and one of them is going to have to leave. And if you see him walk out, it's because it's his son's birthday tonight. As for the pickleball operator, right now it's still a hypothetical discussion, obviously. Because they won't be able to do anything concrete until they know once the zoning has been approved. They're looking at about five or six pickleball courts for this particular operator. And I, I will say whoever goes into that building, if they do have a pickleball or some sort of similar. And I don't, I don't want to say adult entertainment because that often sort of conjures up images of certain thing. We can say some sort of indoor sports related or indoor entertainment. Where adults happen to attend. They're going to spend a significant amount of money putting in tenant improvements in this building. They will be applying for a liquor license, but that's not the primary reason why they want to use the building. And they're not going to do anything that's going to jeopardize their ability to function as a business. These branches, as I said, they have done this for decades. And they're very reputable shopping center owner. And they're very strict about making sure that their tenants adhere to local laws and regulations. So I am sure that if there are anything that is even remotely against. The city code, then it will be fixed. I, I don't want to also let Stan really conjure up that just because it's adults. And there, and there's entertainment and there's also liquor, that they're going to be a rowdy crowd. I mean, I don't see pickleball players being particularly rowdy. In fact, in the city of Atlanta, there's usually a lot of complaints about them because they're outside. And it's the actual hitting of the ball that makes a lot of noise and then people cheering. All that's going to be indoors. So. I think Dunwoody actually has, is in a unique position to actually almost set an example for the metro area. About how that type of use can be inside and become more compatible with the neighborhood. As for, I'm trying to stick to your specific question. I wrote down a lot of notes. But there were some things that were mentioned about some other uses. First, I, I do want to point out that I got ten or so emails, couple of phone calls from the letter that I sent out. For the public participation. And I chatted to folks. I directed the. Brook Farm Homeowners Association President on how to find that list of uses. And the folks here, what you saw in yellow are actually things that are allowed in C1. That branch is saying that they are not going to do. So if there's a way of. Maybe working with staff to make that more clear, we're, we're happy to do so. And for those of you who still have my contact information from that letter, please reach out and I'll make sure you get that list. Some of the specific things, eating and drinking establishment was essentially a restaurant that is allowed now. And will be allowed. Body art and adult entertainment as a sexually oriented business are not allowed. And so it's not allowed now and it won't be allowed in the future. Neither are apartments. So in, in as much as this is a mix of uses. So in, in as much as this is a mix of uses in, in that you have different types of businesses there, um, there will not be any residential. I'm sorry.
No, yeah, thank you for all that. Um, I I think the one other thing that maybe you didn't address, um, and, you know, given that this is still somewhat a hypothetical, but, um, there were some concerns made about hours of operation. You may not know that at this point as a hypothetical, but you have a sense of what a, a pickleball venue, uh, would, what their hours of operation would be or what uh, what a potential tenant might be willing to, uh, commit to in terms of hours.
I, I'm afraid I don't, um, know the answer to that question. Um, but again, what I will say is that um, if they do put the improvements in this building, if there's, um, there is a noise ordinance, which is run, is completely independent of the zoning code.
Right.
And they're also, you know, if they have any complaints, I'm sure they will step up and take responsibility for making sure that, um, there aren't unruly people in the parking lot.
Um, last question that I have for applicant, um, I know that you guys met with neighbors and had, I think, a, a listening session and it seems like that was pretty focused on the types of uses that the community would like to see. Um, did, was there any discussion about, um, improve, you know, side improvements, uh, internal sidewalks, other, other things like that that weren't just strictly what would be uh, the use of the, of the space, but some of the side improvements and if, if you were able to respond to this?
Um, there weren't actually, to my recollection, um, anyone at the neighborhood meeting that brought up landscape islands and pedestrian walkways. Um, I think that was a combination of council members and staff.
Yeah. All right, um, I don't know if Madeline's still around. I just have a few staff questions. Um, and I, maybe, maybe this is less of a question or just wanting to get your thought, but I I do see, looking at the table of what is, what would have been allowed versus what we've scratched off and the, the new uses essentially come down to probably about ten new uses beyond what is, uh, what's currently allowed. Um, and I actually find that they match up pretty in line with what, um, what the Woodlands homeowners wishlist put forward, you know, like restaurants and the indoor pickleball venue, health clubs, hardware stores, things like that. That's a lot of what these new uses that are proposed when we when we look at the, the yellow versus the, the white table, and I know it's a little bit confusing, but there, there are a few uses that to me seem a little intense and may get into, um, a situation where we might have some traffic concerns like uh, schools, for instance, and, uh, special events facilities and I guess maybe I, I just wanna get a little clarification on what those uses might entail, just so we know what we're potentially, um, approving.
Sure. Let me pull up the list. And hopefully it'll be clear. Let me pull up the list and is it, sorry, I'm just trying to get the volume right. Is this good for everyone? Uh, I'll pull up the list in sort of a larger format. If that's helpful, give me one second. So again, the first column here, this is listing the uses. This is listing the uses for the neighborhood shopping district. The dash means it's not permitted. A P means it's permitted. Uh, but I know Scott, you were asking specifically about schools. So this does allow, uh, the C one district does allow for, uh, private schools and also the types of vocational schools. Those would be a newly permitted use. As far as the traffic generation goes, I don't have the trip generation table in front of me, so I can't speak to the traffic for those specifically. Um, but if we want to take another look at this list and, you know, whittle it down, that's a conversation we can have with the applicant and see what they're willing to, you know, agree to as far as their request goes. The list that's been presented so far is what the applicant presented themselves to us.
Right. And I, I think with the schools, my primary concern would be you may be introducing a carpool situation which would have an impact on traffic. I mean, you know, we're, we're talking about replacing, uh, what was a grocery store. So a lot of these uses, I wouldn't be concerned about creating traffic on top of what a grocery store would be or parking on top of what a grocery store would be. But when I see something like a private elementary or a middle school with, uh, potentially the drop-off situation, that that would, uh, that would concern me a little more. Um, and then I guess there is the category that's special events facility. So that's a little open to interpretation. So just kinda wanted to see from staff's perspective, what, what kind of uses a special events facility would, uh, entail.
Typically, uh, like a wedding venue. I can pull up the definition. Um, let me pull that up from the code directly. I'm pulling up the code on my phone real quick.
Well, Madal, don't, I mean,
Are you sure?
Yeah, don't, I mean, I, uh, from what you're saying, just as wedding venues and
Venue, those types of facilities.
And I think I would kinda have a similar concern with that type of, um, use. So I'm, I'm kinda wondering and maybe throwing it out to the rest of the board that a couple, a few of these, um, uses like that, maybe we'd want to have staff either consider uh, taken off the list or making them some type of conditional or special special permit type of use. Uh, just so that, you know, we have a better sense when we're moving forward with a non-hypothetical situation that, um, what the impacts would be exactly. I, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Shin.
Thanks, Scott. I also agree of, uh, revisiting the list. Um, so whether that means we defer this item or, um, recommend specific things be removed from that uh, specialty C one useless. I did have a question for Madeline. Just procedurally, like, what are the steps that this, um, property will go through as far as rezoning? And then if there's something that they do on this list that might not be that pickleball that triggers something, it would come back in front of the neighborhood and like planning commission and city council, like what, what is that? Kind of those next steps of what those people were asking about?
So if they were to do anything that is within the scope of the allowed uses, so if they were to, for you know, a tenant would approach them and it's something that is within the allowed uses, so something marked as P, then they are permitted to do that as of right. Uh, if it's marked with a dash, they're not allowed to do it as of right. And then again, you know, if that's something they really wanted to do, they would have to find a zoning district where it's allowed and request a rezoning, similar to sort of what they're doing right now. Um, if it is a use that is marked as S on the table, that means it requires a special land use permit. And a special land use permit is where someone wants to allow something very specific and they get very specific permission to do that. You can only do that for uses that are marked as S, um, on the table. Um, and there's not very many special uses, um, in the table. Uh, but that is one of the, the options, uh, generally speaking. Uh, and then if they ever wanted to redevelop anything on the property, if they wanted to knock down a building and build something new, um, that would also go through if, if this reasoning were approved, if they ever wanted to do another building, knock it down and rebuild something, that would trigger a requirement. Currently, that is not the case cuz right now it's just under its own general zoning district. There's no special conditions tied to it. If this rezoning is approved, it'll have those kinds of special conditions, like I said, where if they wanna build something new, it would have to go through a review. Same as this.
So in this case, um, I mean, traditionally, if we have like a redevelopment, those hours of operations, that's sometimes like a condition that we have.
So for the hours of, limits of hours of operation, I will say is something we generally see more with a special land use permit when it's a very specific use. Um, it's less common with a general rezoning, but, uh, if it is something that the applicant agrees to, it is something that we can put as a condition with the rezoning.
And if the list that's approved for the C one uses, that is like this specific list of their exclusions, it's that list that would, this property would be held to. It wouldn't be the overall C one zoning.
If we, you know, if you guys approve this, you know, excuse me, if city council approves the rezoning with this table as a condition, uh, the one that restricts the uses in C one, that is what they are, uh, tied to. So it's not gonna be the underlying C one. It'll be the C one amended as part of the rezoning that's allowed.
Okay, thank you. And I would just like to add for people that were concerned about the hours of operation for similar, um, venues to indoor pickleball, they have hours of operation of nine AM to ten PM or midnight on specific days. And within our own community, we have outdoor pickleball courts that are already open until ten PM. So those are outdoor and generate noise. This would be an indoor facility. So, thank you.
All right, um, I guess, um, I'll start with a comment to piggyback on yours. I just wanna confirm and make sure, um, we do have the Dunwoody noise ordinance and that would apply here, right? The same way that would externally in a residential neighborhood, which is eleven PM to seven AM. So we can find some understanding of them having to, um, adhere to that moving forward. Um, I was curious, um, and I think this is probably more a, um, question for the applicant of if there was a plan in place or if they had thought through how they would connect to the other shopping centers, um, if there would be any pathways built or possible use for overflow parking that would address some of these concerns. Um, so specifically the one across the street that has the Chick-fil-A, um, or the Kroger and how you would connect those for better walkability and usage within the community.
Um, we can certainly look into that. Of course, that, that'll be up to them. Um, but we can look into that to see if there's overflow parking is needed. Um, I, I will say in, in relation to the parking, um, the way Branch has reconfigured the site is there, there'll actually be a net loss of just one parking space. Um, and, you know, as you all, I'm sure, uh, aware, there are parking maximums in Dunwoody, so there's only so much parking that they can provide.
Yeah, I think I'm just thinking about making it a holistic feel for the community. Like if, if we're gonna do something fun where we have, we're trying to enhance and bring in, you know, making it feel connected versus just three separate shopping centers.
Uh, uh, this is Jesse Shannon, ninety-three Delmont Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, three zero, three zero, five. I'm one of the partners at Branch Properties and I, I, I was hoping to shed some light on, on some of the questions that were asked. Uh, first and foremost, the, the two uses that were brought up, honestly, we, we don't care that much about. Um, if we wanna limit, I think there's always a fear when you throw a school out there, you immediately go to the large vacancy we have in the shopping center, the thirty thousand square foot space. But that's not the only vacancy we have in the shopping center. So, I, you know, we would propose conditioning, maybe a couple of those uses, special events facility and schools to a maximum amount of square footage. We're fine with that. We're not intending to lease the thirty thousand square feet. And we would certainly agree to limit the size of that to maybe, uh, no more than five thousand square feet. Because if we wanna put a tutoring facility in one of a fourteen hundred square foot space, I don't think that's really a concern here. The concern immediately goes to fear over what are we gonna put in the thirty thousand square foot space? I did wanna talk about parking. I, I've, our company's a fifty-one year old company. I've been doing this for twenty-six years. When we talk about a ratio of five per thousand spaces, that's on the whole center. Not every use in a shopping center needs five spaces per thousand. Several of our uses need one. So perhaps this thirty thousand square feet may need seven spaces per thousand if it's successful, which we hope it is. But we have other uses in the shopping center that offset that by only needing one or two parking spaces per thousand square feet. Okay, as it relates to some of the questions about parking, we're actually have a net reduction of one by adding the landscape islands, i- islands and some of the sidewalks and, and some of the pedestrian, uh, movements that have been requested by staff. As it relates to offsite improvements, we really don't have the authority or the jurisdiction to go offsite on our property and put public improvements and public right of way. That is something that uh, would be left up to Dunwoody. And I do know there's ultimately a plan to do that here to create connectivity. Dunwoody's been very active on that side. But once again, what we're really trying to do is broaden uses. We're adapting to a retail environment that's constantly changing. What uses used to work in a neighborhood shopping center today don't. And, you know, we're under threat from Amazon and these other uses. We're trying to make our shopping centers functionally relevant. There's been three grocery stores here, Harris Teeter, Sprouts and Lidl. They all failed. That's, we are in the grocery shopping center business. We built one literally down the street, the Publix down the street here. Okay, that was our project. We still own it today. We love Dunwoody. But at the end of the day, we have to adapt to the environment in which we're in. This is not a grocery store site. We see as a phenomenal opportunity to create family entertainment. We probably had half a dozen calls from pickleball operators. We would love to be able to answer some of the questions that you're asking, but we can't because we can't lease to these groups until we get our zoning that allows us to do that. But we've been in Atlanta for fifty-one years. I'm happy to give you our office address. You can come down and talk to us anytime. We're not going anywhere. We're here to, to build equality, probably not even build, lease. There's no new development occurring here other than some of the side improvements for landscaping and sidewalks. But we're here to make this project functionally relevant to serve the community. Some of these nuisance uses, nuisance uses, we try to get as rid of as many as possible and working with staff. But the two you mentioned, we're happy to limit those to, to five thousand square feet max to allay some of the concerns that were raised by, by, uh, staff. I'll, I'll leave it at that. I don't know if you have any other questions, but
Yeah, I actually, um, was going to ask what other shopping centers you've done to give us kind of a perspective. So understanding that you did the public one, but what other ones? Um, just, it'll help us get a visual what they look like.
Well, uh, we own Peachtree Battle Shopping Center in Buckhead. We own CityWalk Shopping Center in Sandy Springs, the Kroger up on the hill. We own Hugh Howell Marketplace and Tucker, which is a recent Publix development. We just completed Limestone Marketplace in the city of Gainesville. That's another Publix anchor shopping center development. Um, what else do we?
I think that's, those are close enough to get to thank you.
North Decatur Square in Decatur, which is that we expanded the Kroger there. We own that, but Shallowford Falls Shopping Center and East Cobb, another, so anyway, we, we, we're, we're active in the community and, and typically we own grocery stores. It just, this particular situation, it didn't work out and we're, we're trying to react to that.
Yeah. Um, I don't have any questions, but I do wanna just make, um, a comment or suggestion. I think that, um, it could be helpful, um, for staff if after this we're able to send out I think the list of what is permitted and kind of what the def, uh, basic definition or an example of what that is to help our fellow community members kind of wrap their minds around it and understand it. I think that would be really helpful. And I think hearing their comments today, that, that might go a long way as a follow-up if possible.
Thank you. Uh, all right, uh, Commissioner Cameron.
Most of my questions have been covered by the able people to the right of me. Um, but I just wanna reiterate that the city of Dunwoody ordinances address a lot of the issues that have been raised here. And, um, these are all discussed with the concerns of our residents in mind. Also, um,
Also, I believe I went to the website and I was able to pull up the list that's been shown here. So I'm sorry that some people weren't able to obtain that, but I just went and pulled it up again. So you can certainly go to the city's website and go to the meetings listings. And all of this information that you've seen and that we've been discussing tonight is there for you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon.
Most of my questions have been answered also, but. I want to clarify one question that a resident had, like. What does happen when, this is for my knowledge too. What does happen if and when the current owner sells the property? Does it have to go back through rezoning? Or does it stand as a C one as it is?
So the rezoning is not tied to the ownership of the property. It's tied to the property itself, so it runs with the land. So they will be, whoever buys the property next is going to be subject to the C one standards. As proposed by the rezoning, so the restricted C one district. And that'll carry with the land no matter who owns it. And then if anyone, whether it's branch or a future owner, wants to make changes to the property, like I said, in terms of the physical layout. Wants to build new buildings, then it'll have to go back before Planning Commission and Mayor and City Council. And if they want to change the allowed uses again, that would have to go through Planning Commission and City Council.
Thanks. Before we vote.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions before we move on.
No, but this is just a question that I have. Are we able to. Poll the crowd and see if a lot of their concerns have been answered?
I'm not sure if there's a practical way to do that. I'm sure the crowd will let us know what they think about our decision. But I don't, I don't know. Well, and they've made us aware of what most of their concerns were in the, in the speaking, so I would, I would take that under advisement as we craft what we do next.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Madeline, may I have a moment of your time, please? Just a couple, couple points of clarity. This is spot zoning, correct, essentially?
There is C one right across the street, so it's not technically, you know, spot zoning. But there's a lot of NS in this area, a lot of OI and a lot of C one, so there's varied zoning districts over here.
And do we have other instances of spot zoning where we take a, we take a particular variant and, and adapt it? Pretty materially in Dunwoody, or is this, is this kind of unique?
So a lot of, I mean, for drawing on examples, you know, we have properties right by here in City Hall. Up the road, eighty-four perimeter is, you know, a PC dash two district, but it's surrounded by, you know, OI. And other types of zoning districts, C one, so it's not uncommon. To, to rezone a particular property to a different zoning district.
But what about a materially altered zoning district whereby the zoning district really doesn't represent the zoning district, but rather some partial reflection thereof?
So in terms of whether or not the use table is restricted, is not as common. But we put conditions on lots of different zoning actions that we take, so it's standard practice. You know, whenever staff is doing any sort of business license review in the future. We're always checking the zoning cases and reviewing the conditions to make sure whatever is proposed is meeting those requirements.
Okay. I think we, we've all heard a comment echoed over and over again, and I. I pulled over the list. I'm going to want to ask about a couple items on the list that I haven't heard yet. But is there a better way to tie in a potential plan for redevelopment into a specific use? I mean, what I'm hearing from, from the, the neighbors here, hey, pickleball might be cool if done under the correct conditions at the correct hours and safety and everything else. But what I see is by offering a C one, even a restricted C one zoning, if they wanted to open up an animal care and boarding shop. They'd be within their rights to do so.
So, am I wrong? Yeah, animal care, let me pull up that section of the code, or excuse me, the use table.
That's on page three is where I've got it noted.
Yeah, so animal grooming, animal hospital and veterinary clinic is something that's already a permitted use. In both NS and the proposed C one district.
I was asking about the care and boarding.
Care and boarding currently requires a special land use permit in the NS district. But it would be permitted as of right in the C one district as proposed.
So pickleball instantly became unpalatable to the masses, as it were. They could take a zoning decision like this and open up a dog, you know, dog care and boarding situation, correct?
So the rezoning would allow them to have a wider variety of tenants, a wider mix of uses. That is the ultimate goal. I know the catalyst for this request is the pickleball specifically. But I also think they're thinking about the future and the type of tenant mix that would be possible there. So having a C one district, it does have more allowed uses than the NS shopping center district does. And in terms of, you know, whether or not we can approve just one specific use. Generally, that's done through a special land use permit, but we don't allow special land use permits unless it's in the code specifically. As something marked with an S, and currently it's not. It's just completely disallowed from NS at all. You know, if we wanted to take another look at the. Table as it's proposed by the applicant for, you know, what would be allowed there under the C one district. That is something that we have the ability to do as part of the process.
So potentially, and I'm, I'm speaking out loud here to try and allay concerns or try and key us into something that sounds like a lot of people might like. We could potentially amend this list to. To close the door on nearly everything except a pickleball plan. And then see that later or approve that concomitantly with it. I, my concern here, and I think the concern that is kind of widely shared is, okay, well, once this is approved, once this horse leaves the barn. We're, you know, we're, we are, they're within their rights to put a trade school there or a private elementary. Or I don't know what a utility facility essential is, but that might be something worth talking about. Or animal care boarding or a special events facility. We're here in pickleball. The pictures of pickleball look pretty cool. And if it's done within the bounds of state or, or city ordinance, that would be pretty cool too. I think the concern is there's an amount of trust that's being asked of this board and ultimately of city council. And we want to make sure that that trust is, is well placed and honored by us and by them.
And Mr. Chairman, there's one thing to consider that this is like the zoning for the entire shopping center, right? I mean, so they have an entire shopping center. It's not just for that, for that formal grocery space. They have a lot of smaller spaces. That they're trying to fill, so we need to have that, that use mix in there. Like that, that it's not just like, it's not just the, the potential pickleball location, but it is an entire shopping center. To be filled with like a diversity of uses, you know.
And, okay, okay, at, at this point, I think. I think I, I don't, I don't have any more questions, so I would open it up for us to have discussion. If anybody else has questions, by all means. But let's, let's, let's form some discussion here and let's see if ultimately we can form a motion. And I want to, I want to remind everybody that if we need to move to defer, we don't have to do anything tonight. We could defer if there are things we want to take a better look at. So to the tune of hearing what the public has to say, that might be the best option, you know. So I'm going to step back. Let's have some discussion.
I just had one clarifying question. I'm not sure if Madeline or Paul used this, but you stated that it's C one across the street? Is that what you said? The other shopping center next door?
No, so not the other shopping center. I mean, I can pull up the zoning map so we can take a look.
Yeah, I would just be curious to see what's around it.
I think as we wait for Madeline, if there's other discussion, I would encourage us to begin, just in the, in the interest.
Pulled up, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the subject property right here. Oh, sorry, must be the, the share. So this is the zoning map, so you can see there's NS. This is the shopping center across the street. But right at the other corner here is C one. There's also OI in this district. And then as well as the R dash one hundred, which is the single family and RM dash one hundred, which is multifamily.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
All right, so let's, let's, let's talk about this. I mean, we, we know what our options are as a board. I think we've heard some significant concerns about, about trust and what we can line up. Let's, let's ask whatever questions we need and see if we can't form a, we can't form a motion as a body.
I guess, as I said before, I would be in favor of deferring this item to take a look at that table based on. Both the public comments and the commissioner comments that came up today to either add conditions to restrict some of the. You know, square foot usage or something, or to strike some of those allowable uses.
I think there are some compelling arguments in favor of that. Before we actually form a motion on that, though, let's, let's talk about this. Are there any other? Are there any other angles or something, something that we as a board should, should take up or consider as we try and figure out a way forward?
I would say that I think it's interesting having a wider mixed use. In, in the sense that we might see less vacant property over time. And I would prefer to have dog grooming over vacant lot anytime. And so I do think that as we think about it, understanding, you know, can we provide. That wider mixed use in order to help us bring in new businesses. That will help us also increase the type of individuals we want to grow within our community, servicing them in the community as well. And also allowing for less of a vacancy rate within Dunwoody is, as, you know, rental space changes, office space changes.
If I may, and I know I'm totally out of order, but we have already agreed to putting a maximum of five thousand square feet. For special events and schools. I'm sorry, you're having trouble hearing me? We've already agreed to ma- having a maximum square footage for special events and schools. And we don't really care about the animal boarding. We just did not want it to conflict with any of the veterinary practices. And, or animal care types of businesses that look after animals. I think we've got enough. Oh, they do. Yeah, sorry. They have, they do actually keep animals overnight in the veterinary facility. So. Five thousand square feet, okay. And I'm sure if a, you know, huge pet daycare center, whatever, wanted. To go in there, they're not going to pick a property that doesn't have any outdoor space. Typically, you have those, those facilities have some sort of outdoor runs, which of course is typically the issue with, with pet care. We also are not going to be going to city council until December, if even if we stay on the current schedule. So we've got time to sit. I know staff has been absorbing. I've been taking a bunch of notes. So we have time to fine tune some of these things. And have another look at all of the uses that we are proposing to add to the list. I guess it's a better way of saying that, and I think Mr. Brown mentioned that's about ten things that aren't allowed already. And come up with square footage restrictions or other ways potentially to address the concerns here tonight.
I just have one, one quick question for you. I couldn't quite hear what the gentleman behind you was saying, but do your leases have exclusive use provisions? So that potentially a pet boarding. Business would be excluded. Okay.
Yes. Only one bet.
But you could potentially do animal boarding, if even though the vet boards?
They're already doing animal boarding, yeah.
Okay.
For some reason, although dogs are always scared to death to go into a vent, that they're usually pretty quiet at night.
Hearing that, do we have, do we have any further discussion at this time? Anything for the board's consideration?
I just, I, I tend to agree with wanting to allow more flexibility in the uses. Especially so, so we don't go forward and have vacancies like we've had before. But, you know, I do, as I noted, there's a few things on the list and it's good to hear the applicant say they're willing to work with staff. To revisit the list a little bit. And I think the way that it's been presented has lent, lended a little to some confusion tonight. In terms of what's currently allowed versus what would be allowed in C one versus what. Would be allowed after we take that cut that the applicant has taken, so I think. You know, I, I hate to defer things, but it sounds, first of all, like we're not gonna extend the time. Because it can't go to council until December anyway. I think it's a great opportunity for staff and the applicant to work together. On revisiting the table, finding a way to better communicate that to the, the neighborhood so they feel comfortable with everything. So that, that's my thought there. I've been on the commission for two years and have always wanted to avoid deferring. But I, I think in this case, to me, it seems like the, maybe the right thing to do to just make sure that we get it right.
Is there any other discussion at this point?
Yeah, I agree. I would like the residents to have a little more time to look at. Things more closely and express their thoughts.
Any other discussion at this point? Hearing none, is, is there any of us, are there any of us who'd be ready to form a motion?
I motion to defer rezoning case twenty-four oh two to the next planning commission meeting.
All right, just to restate, Commissioner Shin has voted to move that we, or has moved that we defer to the next planning commission meeting. Did I restate that correctly? Okay, there's, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Can we add a request along with it?
That would be, at this point, it'd probably be a separate motion.
Okay.
Or we can, you can retract your motion if you wish and reform it based on.
I guess I'm going to retract my motion.
And I hear you say you retract that, okay.
I was just going to say, I, I agree that we should defer, but I would like to include a request to, for staff to communicate with the applicant. And discuss some of the restrictions to the square footage, for example, that we've discussed here tonight.
I'll give it a go. Or a motion.
All right. Wait, hang on one sec, Paul.
Would you, would you please announce like the next, for the, the people in attendance here to the next. So it would be to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which is on November nineteenth. So it's the holidays are, are throwing us off there, November nineteenth at six PM here at City Hall.
Okay, so I heard you say that was November, we're scheduled for November nineteenth at six PM at City Hall. Now, that's a Tuesday, correct? What, what day does Thanksgiving fall on? Twenty-eighth, so there is some space there. Thank you, everybody. All right.
And, and I just wanted to confirm with, with staff, deferring it to that November meeting. It, it would still be in time to make the December council meeting after that, correct?
Yeah, we can still make it to December council.
Okay.
Okay, so we had, we had a motion and then we had it retracted. To potentially suggest adding some additional conditions, which would include fleshing out some of these limitations based on the concerns. That were expressed in Commissioner Edmondson, I believe I heard you say, you'll take a go at it.
I'll take a go at it.
All right.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to defer RZ twenty-four oh two, the request to rezone. Two four eight zero, two five two six Mount Vernon Road and everything that comes after that. Until the November nineteenth, Planning Commission meeting, which will be held at six PM at City Hall. Until the November nineteenth, the planning commission meeting, which will be held at six P M. At City Hall. As part of that, we would like to ask for, one, the applicant to work with staff. To specifically look at refining the list of acceptable uses. And or defining those via square footage and what would be allowable there. Two, we would also ask that before the November nineteenth planning commission meeting. That an updated copy of those allowable uses be posted and provided to the community. Along with a definition and or example of what those permitted uses are. So that they can clearly understand those impacts to the development.
I'm going to do my best to repeat that till you just got that on the record. All right, so Commissioner Edmondson moved to defer. And she further cited the date, November nineteenth, the place, City Hall, and the time at six P M. And then further moved to ask applicant staff to refine the list. Of permitted uses or further define restrictions to better reflect some of the concerns we've heard here today. And as second, before the meeting, publish an updated copy of the permitted uses, i.e. that list that they're generating. In addition to definitions or examples that would help folks understand what they're reading. Do I restate that?
You got it.
Okay, so hearing a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Shin seconds. We've got a motion. We've got a second. Is there any debate or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, it would be the appropriate time to vote. All in favor of approving this motion, please raise your hands. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. We, believe it or not, still have some meeting here. There's not a lot of excitement because I don't think there's a lot of additional items. But I would ask everybody to please hold on for one moment while I make your way to the exit quietly. Paul, other business? Folks, is there any public comment? If you want to talk to the commission? Where's my gavel? I don't, oh, oh, here we go. Always wanted to use one of these. Well, now I feel important. All right, folks, there is an opportunity here. I see most folks making their way toward the exit. There is an opportunity for public comment. And we are happy to hear public comment, should you desire. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to the planning commission at this time? If so, please make yourself known, introduce yourself, share your address and name. Hearing and seeing none will move forward. Is there any commission comment at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we stand adjourned. All right, that's fine. All right. I almost hit it and I realized it was sitting on a computer, so. Sir. Yes, sir.